Right, so I guess, yes, I will call the meeting to order six o'clock. This is Friday, June 14th, Amendment Select Board meeting, not our usual meeting night. So we have a few things on the agenda tonight, and we don't see Brendan here yet. But we do have a quorum. So anyhow, we'll, we'll get started. Let me just bring up the agenda. All right, so. All right, so our first item on the agenda, actually, it would be nice if, let me just text Brendan, it would be nice if he could be here for this. I know that he's.
He's here, he just.
He's here now? Okay, great. Okay, all right, yeah, so our first item on the agenda is to vote to approve our town administrator contract with Jeremy Stoll. And, let me see. So we have here, Jeremy is here with us tonight. I don't, would you like to introduce yourself, Jeremy?
Yeah, certainly. I'll be very brief. I'm sure I'll talk lots more, lots of these later, so I'll keep it short. But, yeah, my name is Jeremy Stoll. Gone through the process with the Select Board, the Town Administrator Screening Committee, and spent the last week or so going back and forth with Caris North. I've gotten to speak to a few staff in town. I'm really excited to join, start July 8th, is the anticipated start date. And I'm joining the community from the Bristol County Sheriff's Office, where I'm the CFO. And I've previously been the Budget Director and Capital Projects Administrator for the City of Attleboro, and a Budget Analyst and Payroll Manager, and amongst some other things for the Public Schools at Brookline, and then some roles in the municipal bond world. So I'm on the finance side, in recent, past couple of years, I've been more on the leadership administrative side. And I'm excited to bring that experience to Mendon, to a town close to home to me, and to a town I'm excited to get to know a little bit better. So I appreciate the opportunity and looking forward to working with all of you.
Great, and we are very happy to be working with you. It's been, as you know, it's been a long, long time that we've been searching for a town administrator, so we're going on a year now since our permanent full-time administrator left us. And we've had some very competent interim town administrators, but only on a part-time basis. And so our, our current interim TA is not able to join this meeting tonight, as he has already reached his hours for the week. So actually, that reminds me, if I could get one of the other Select Board members to take charge of some minutes, at least to capture our votes, so this is being recorded, but in the absence of an executive assistant and a town administrator, both of which we hope to fill soon, we do need someone to take charge of minutes.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, let's see. So does anyone have any other questions or comments for Jeremy? So we have, hopefully, you've all had a chance, all the Select Board members have had a chance to read through the contract, and we did get the, the background check. So that was all clear, but if there are any other questions, I would be looking for a motion, which I believe you should have in your packets.
I move to approve the employment agreement with Jeremy Stoll for the role of Town Administrator with an appointment date of July 8th, 2024.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? All right, and since this is a, an online meeting, we're gonna do roll call vote. So all in favor, Brugos, aye?
Janelle, aye.
Morally, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Okay, great, and that's all of us who are here. So it passes. Congratulations, Jeremy. Welcome, welcome aboard. Yeah, we.
Welcome to the team.
Yeah, we were, well, I'm sure you'll hear a lot more from us. And, yeah, we're very excited that you're going to be starting with us. Yeah, July 8th, so, thank you.
Looking forward to it. Welcome aboard.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, everyone, and, yeah, we'll, we'll talk soon and often.
Sounds good. All right.
Be careful what you wish for, that's all I'll say there.
Pretty wise words, right there.
I, I, I talk like I get paid by the word sometimes, so you too.
Yeah, I don't think that was in your contract, so I think we're safe. All right, let's see. So next on the agenda is the discussion and vote for transitional administrator services. So Select Board members, did you have a chance to read, it was in the packet, there was an email from Greg offering to do some specific services. So his, his contract as interim town administrator ends on, I believe he said it was June 30th, but he has a vacation coming up, so his last day is effectively, is it June 24th? Hang on, let me scroll down.
Yeah, that's, that's what it says.
Okay, yes. So he is willing to continue to work with us. So seeing as our new town administrator is not available to start until July 8th, and since, as it is, Greg will be stopping on June 24th, there is this gap where we will not have a town administrator, we will not have an interim town administrator. And so Greg is willing to continue in the capacity of interim town administrator until we have, until Jeremy starts, and then after that, he is willing to stay on so that there can be some overlap, so that he can help show, show the ropes, sort of talk through projects that are going on. So anyhow, so that I, have you all had a chance to read that proposal from Greg?
I have, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So any, any questions about that? Greg is not able to join us tonight. So we don't necessarily have to vote on this tonight, but this is our last meeting before Greg's last day with his current contract.
So, speaking for myself, I would be in favor of, of at least some transitional period with overlap between the two. I wouldn't want, I wanna set Jeremy up for success right away, you know, to have someone here to help ease that transition. As to the length of time, I think I'm open to, you know, maybe two or three weeks, or something like that.
Right.
But, yeah, that's, that's, I guess, where I'd wanna start the discussion, see if everyone else is on the same page.
Not only Jeremy, but everyone that's coming on board, you know.
Oh, yeah.
We wanna support them all, make them all successful.
Exactly, yes, yes, we do, and I think especially since there's been this, well, there's going to be a gap. There's, we don't currently have an executive assistant, and we'll have the gap between the interim TA and the full-time TA.
So I, yeah, I would be in favor of acting. Does anyone have any thought as to the, the length of overlap we would like?
So, I mean, the proposal was the one, so the, I guess, July 3rd to July 5th to clean up whatever unresolved matters there are, and then possibly, so that would be, and then the two weeks afterwards, which would be overlapping with the new town administrator, was that, was a suggested timeframe, which I think is a good starting point.
I, I agree, yeah.
Mike or Mike, do you have thoughts on that timeframe?
No, I, I think I would be willing to, to approve up to the end of July. I think at the, I think it's reasonable if he's asking for the COLA, you know, that.
Right.
Everybody else would get, so I would make a motion to approve the current interim town administrator at 12 hours a week, you know, at $80 dollars an hour, up to, up to the end of July, as needed.
Have we done any funny, sorry, is there a second on that, I guess?
Yeah, is there a second?
I guess, I mean, I guess I'll second that, but I'd like to hear the discussion, too.
Okay, yeah, discussion.
Have we done any, do we understand the financial impact on this?
Uh, so I guess.
12 hours a week?
I mean, I was just surprised to see a COLA in there, to be quite honest.
Yeah, well, he asked for it. Basically, it, it comes out to 1,008 bucks a week for the, for four weeks, so it'd be 4,000, $4,100 at, at most.
I see Jody is on the call. Jody, do you have thoughts about the impact of this proposal?
This is the first I'm hearing of it, so I, I don't.
Right, you have not had a chance to look into it, right? So I guess one question is whether we would want to start with at least some provisional, you know, continuation, at least until Jeremy starts, just to continue that, the few days? That does put us into the next fiscal year. Any other thoughts on that?
I, I mean, I, I was initially thinking two, maybe three weeks. I think the timeline he laid out was probably the first week in July for a couple of days, and then two following weeks, right?
Right, but possibly just the 12 hours?
Yeah, and all I'm, all I'm saying is to, to just give it to the end of July, if necessary. I don't, I don't sense that we'll need, we'll need that. But, you know, if it's, if it's required for some reason, I think it just gives us some flexibility. But I'm, I'm certainly not in favor of having somebody hang around if they're not needed, but. And my sense of it is that Jeremy will be fine, particularly, you know, the way things are right now, but I just wanted to give that option, like I said, up to the end of July. Doesn't have to be, you know, for that.
I mean, would we wanna include any contingencies based on, like, budget, or, you know, determining where the fund, this funding would come from? Since we don't have, we may not have that.
We can run hot, right? We can run hot. It's not that much, not, not a big dollar amount. But I was wondering if we amend the motion to say, to, to agree to what Greg has laid out with the possibility of extending to the end of the month. That way, he's got a good sense that it could be two weeks, and it's not up in the air in terms, you know, we'll talk about extending if we see how it looks when we get there. I'm assuming he laid it out, 'cause from his standpoint, that's sort of, would be his sweet spot for, you know, commitment, right?
Right, 'cause I think he, right, he does have still the, the limited, the, his income limits that he wants to stay under, so.
And this will be half the hours that he was, I mean, 12, 24 to 12, right?
Right. So are you suggesting an amendment to the motion, Mike?
Only if anyone, if no one has an issue with the motion on the table, we just, I, I say we move to vote. If they think it makes sense to amend it, then somebody can amend it.
I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I, I don't see the, at this point, I don't feel the need to amend it. I think, you know, up, up to the end of the month, just give the flexibility. But certainly, the understanding is that if, and I, I mean, Greg's been here for six months, and I get the sense that, you know, Jeremy has a good handle, you know, on the, on the circumstances. And certainly, if, if they feel that they need it, they would ask for it. I don't think we'd argue that, but.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Greg's been here for three, I just wanna make sure, because it was, it's three months, right? He's been here?
I think so, yes, right, yeah, I mean, I, I can't remember.
I'm like, I'm losing time.
Well, yeah, right.
We had David for the first few months of the year, and then.
Right, and then we started, right, so it's, right, and then he extended it, and, right, so.
So, all right, so I think any further discussion? All right, so we'll bring it to a vote, so roll call vote, so Brugos, aye?
Janelle, aye.
Morally, aye.
Goddard, aye.
All right, great, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have, "Meet with Executive Assistant Candidate and Vote to Ratify Hiring." So I believe we have a couple of people on the call about that, so I think Jennifer O'Neill, you have met the candidate, and I believe we have the candidate here also, but Jennifer, could you say a few words?
Yes, so I met with Katie, along with Chief Kersey and Greg. I think it was about two, two weeks ago, so she was, you know, one of several candidates that we interviewed. We received multiple resumes for this position, so after the interview process, after discussion, she was our top choice, and we have gone through the background check, and everything came back clear, and we are ready to move forward to have somebody in this position. And I think Katie is gonna hit the ground running. She is coming to us from another municipality in the same capacity, so she understands the role, she, she knows what needs to be done. And I, I think, I think we're going to be very happy with, with this. And she had glowing recommendations from one of our current employees as well, so.
Wonderful.
Excellent. Great, thank you, Jen. And, and Katie, thank you for joining us tonight. Do you, do you have anything you want to add to what Jen has said?
Well, thank you for having me. I'm excited to start, and that's, I'm just excited to start here.
Wonderful, that's, that's what we need. So we're, we're thrilled that you'll be joining us, assuming that, you know, we're gonna vote on this, but we're thrilled that we will be having you to fill this very important role. We've definitely missed having someone in this position for the last month. So anyhow, are there any, any other questions or comments from the rest of the board?
Just looking forward to working with you.
All right, so I would be looking forward, I would be looking for a motion.
I can get to that motion in a second.
Do we have a start date? Because I know it's not in the motion.
We had said honor before the 8th of July.
So I'm looking to ratify the appointment of Katie.
You wanna start?
Sorry, did, were you talking to me?
Yeah, it's, if you're gonna fill the role, I, I know it's right after the, after the holidays, so I don't know if they have plans if you'd like to start sooner than that, or if the 8th works for you.
I can start sooner if you guys would like me to.
Dan, what's your schedule? When are you gonna be in?
I actually am on vacation, or I'm supposed to be on vacation, the week of July 1st, so.
Okay.
But I think there, there is, there's been some talk of me coming in on the 2nd, but again, you know, whatever, whatever works, but.
The 8th it is. We don't wanna interrupt your vacation.
Well, let's just, I, I mean, my, my thought is that, that, you know, we need, you need to have other folks around in Town Hall. So why don't we just make you start the same day as Jeremy, on the 8th?
That's right.
Sounds good.
Good.
All right, so I move to ratify the appointment of Katie Moxon for the position of Select Board Executive Assistant, commencing on July 8th.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, then, let's go to a vote. All in favor, Brugos, aye?
Janelle, aye.
Morally, aye.
Goddard, aye.
All right, wonderful, passes, so welcome, Katie. We are thrilled that you'll be starting with us soon. And thank you for joining us tonight.
Good to meet everybody.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, right.
Dan has his hand up.
Oh, Dan, yes.
Um, maybe I wasn't fully listening. Did you vote on a pay rate for this position?
It was not in the motion. Should we have the pay rate?
Is it dictated, isn't that, is, is her position?
No, her position's not in the union, and we've already, we've, we have made a financial offer based on conversations with the interim town administrator for this position. I mean, I can certainly.
Yeah, well, what is it?
It's 65 a year.
Okay, and you've, and you've accepted that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, and it's, it's based on a, on four days a week, on the, and the understanding is that you're gonna have to come to some Select Board meetings in the evenings. So is this an exempt, is this an exempt position? Is that what we've done?
We currently have it listed as exempt, but we are going through the process of some comp and classic analysis, or we're, we're starting that process, I think, through some of the other things that we're talking about. So with our work with the Call-In Center, I think that'll be confirmed.
Sure, but, but currently, right now, it's an exempt position for the salary of 65,000 a year?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Mike, the, the four days a week is four days in the office, but it's an exempt position, agreed?
Right, that's why I asked, correct. So the, and that's why I say, certainly, you know, the expectation is that when Town Hall is open, you know, you will be in Town Hall. When it's closed, you don't need to be. But there may be times when you may have to, as an exempt position, and as, just as Jeremy, you may need to be there in the evening or on a Friday, you know.
Hopefully, not too many Fridays, but.
Correct, town meetings, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, that's my, since, since that's in the bylaw, it has to be a Friday, right? So, for now.
Dan, you have another question?
So I guess just follow-up questions. So this position would have a contract, then, is what you're stating? Or would this just fall under the personnel policy?
Uh, Jen, can you answer that?
It will fall under the personnel policy, similar to my position, similar to the other executive assistant positions that are, that are there, but yeah. And again, we are, there are other conversations being had about doing some comp and class studies, so other things could come out of this, but right now, this, it's going to be an exempt position.
Thank you, Jen. Does that answer your question, Dan?
Yep.
Okay, great, all right, all right, well, so Katie, we will meet you, I guess, unless we have an opportunity to meet you sooner, we will meet you the week of July 8th.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, all right, next on the agenda, we have the Metacoma Land Trust, "Approve and Vote on the Conservation Restriction for the Van der Sluis Property." So this has been a fast-moving target. So the, the state, I don't know, do we have anyone on the call specifically about that? I think Ann, and Ann Mazur, and Lisa Mozinski came to our June 5th meeting to present about this. The conservation restriction was still not quite finished. It's gone back and forth with state agencies, and, but they did push forward at some meetings yesterday afternoon, and they brought the conservation restriction to a state that, that the Conservation Commission voted to approve it, contingent on final approval. And I've been in contact with Town Council, with Caris, who has said that she's read through it, and she had only minor concerns over some wording, which she said that it would be okay either way. So she has suggested that we can vote on it tonight, but append to the written motion from the last meeting. We can append, hang on, I think, "Subject to Final Approval" was the terms. And I believe I sent that to, to the Select Board members by email, since it didn't make it into the packet. So have people had a chance to look at that? I know all of it was very, like, very late arriving. So I don't know if you had a chance to look that over. And I guess further information is just a reminder that there is a hard deadline in order to get some matching grants for this, that we need to have signatures, and they need to be wet signatures by, hang on, was it June 25th or 24th?
It was that Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, so before our next scheduled meeting, and so this, that was actually the reason that we scheduled this meeting for tonight, was to have this meeting be after the Conservation Commission meeting, where they planned on voting on that. There, it was a bit touch and go about whether they were going to be able to get it ready to, for that vote, but they did. They, they, it sounds like they had a, a long working meeting yesterday afternoon. And so I guess the question is, do we want to vote on this? We have, you know, we have the okay from Town Council to do it. If we do not vote tonight, in order to meet this deadline, the Select Board would have to schedule another off-cycle meeting before the 24th. And I will be, I will not be available to sign it after that point. And it sound, but it sounds like we only need, we need a majority of the Select Board to vote on it, and we need a majority of the Select Board to sign it, but it doesn't sound like it needs to be the same individuals.
So, so, reading Caris's emails, Elena, my sense is, one, I think her, her, her additions, I would like to see in there, 'cause I think they're valid in terms of just clarification and some of that stuff. But her second email indicating that she's good if we vote on it, I got the sense, and also, so some of her things were suggestions, not, not necessarily mandatory. Is my understanding correct?
That was my understanding as well, that she did, she would like to see those changes if they can be fit in without changing the timeline, was my impression. But, but it sounds like there may be those opportunities. I, I did email Carl, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, to ask if he could send her comments to the appropriate people, but I don't know what the state is there. So it could be that if, you know, were we to vote on this tonight, the language with the amended motion would give opportunity for, like, for that final approval. So it may not be Monday, for example. Could be Monday, I don't know, things have moved faster than I expected in the last couple of days. But there are, I guess, there are, as, as you've all seen, there are a number of signature pages. So there are a number of people who need to give their final approval on this, including the, the landowners, as well as Metacoma Land Trust, this, and the state.
Is, is Caris one of the final approvals, by the way?
I don't think she, she can be statutorily, but.
Well, no, 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 I guess what I, you know, from our standpoint, right? So I understand Metacoma, Concom, and, and the landowner have to come to agreement, but just the type of language she was suggesting, Mike, in this last edit, tells me that, would it behoove the town to make sure our Town Council has one last look at what is the final approval from the other folks?
Before we sign it.
Well, I, I think, I mean, my suggestion would be that we vote to approve it as Town Council recommended. So the only reason, so if, if, if there are changes to what's there, then, you know, it would have to come back for another vote to us anyways, because I think our, our vote would need to be contingent on what she said.
The, the motion indicates "subject to final approval," and if that approval is by three other parties, then whatever they decide, we've, we're, we're signing off on. That's why I was wondering, does Caris get another look at it? That's all.
Well, I would, I would argue, I, you know what, maybe the way this is written, I read it, is ambiguous, but it says "subject to final approval." I, I guess, you know, the way that reads, you know, who's final approval? It also, it almost makes it meaningless.
Right, well, that was, those were her words, like I asked for her suggestion about how we might change the motion.
Well, but, you know, I guess, I guess what I'd need to know, what I would like to know, is what exactly is still up in the air? You know, in other words, we're, we're waiting for different people, and I think, I think we're on the same page with Concom, so it's gotta be the state.
And. I think the, the landowners.
You know? You know, so I, and I, and my understanding of this whole time is we've been waiting for the, for somebody at the state to come up with a language, and they just haven't yet.
Well, they did, they did yesterday.
Right, well, they, oh, let's put it like they hadn't until, until now.
Right, I know, and it's, it's that the timeframe is very tight.
So Elaine, is it, you're understanding that the, the landowners are the, have to look at the revised language that Concom, the state, and Metacoma had looked at yesterday?
Let me see.
My sense is Carl kinda looked at it, and I believe he's on board, based on his email.
He, he is, right, I forwarded what, what, what I got from him. 'Cause there are, the, the Concom's vote was also contingent on final approval.
I'd be okay with this motion, 'cause in the end, if it, if it's, if it gets weird, we just don't sign, and then it, it's almost like a, a, what do you call it, a silent veto or something like that? You know, it just sits on the desk.
Right, that's, that's, I guess that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, I mean, right, that's.
Yeah, that's where I am too.
We, I think that maybe the language gives that flexibility, that we can hear that there is sufficient final approval.
And then we can go.
From the authors, and we can, we certainly can check back in with Charis at that point to say, like, do we have your, your blessing to sign this?
And, and the other thing, Elaine, is I feel like our board is sort of, um, it's almost ceremonial in the sense we want to make sure it all fits and goes together, but my expertise in this space, I can't speak to the good or the bad of the actual agreement. I'm looking for, for the other folks to say they're all good with it, and we'll say.
Right, I, I agree, that they, they need our signature, but they maybe don't need so much of our input.
We, we shouldn't be a blocker, I guess, is my point, you know?
Right.
Yeah, 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 I, I agree. And it's just going to be incumbent on us to make sure that when we, uh, get the agreement, that we look over it, make sure everything is up to snuff and.
Right, and I think it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that town council has had her chance to read over it and give us, uh, like, raise any red flags for us, and she, she did not have any red flags, she just, she had some uh, suggestions for, uh, for rephrasing some things, and, and hopefully those will, I mean, hopefully it will, those will make it into the final version, but I don't know. I don't know.
And Mr. Proctor's on the line, so I'm sure he's taking copious notes right now and will report back and pass our thoughts along. I am, uh, I'm willing to make the motion if you'd like me to.
I would be, I would be happy to entertain that motion.
I move to approve the conservation restriction easement for the premises located at 101 and 109 Northern Avenue, Mendon, acting pursuant to sections thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three of chapter one eighty-four of the Massachusetts General Laws. Grant with quitclaim covenants to Metecomit Land Trust, a Massachusetts nonprofit conservation organization with an address of P.O. Box two thirty-one Franklin, Mass. zero two zero three eight. Their permitted successors and assigns, uh, primary grantee in the town of Mendon with the address of twenty Main Street, Mendon, Mass. oh one seven five six, acting by and through its Conservation Commission by authority of section eight C of chapter forty of the Massachusetts General Laws. Its permitted successors and assigns, and, and assigns, subject to final approval.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all right, then I, let's go to a vote, so all in favor, Brugos, aye?
Janelle, aye.
Morally, aye.
God, it aye.
Okay, thank you, it passes. So we will, uh, I guess we'll be in touch about when there will be an actual physical document for us to sign, um, and it sounds like it, it needs to be wet signatures from all of us, so may or might, may or may not include mine before I depart. All right, so that is the last item of our open session, um, and I, so we will, um, not be returning to adjourn, um, at this point. So I think I would, um, anyhow, thank you, thank you all for joining us for this open session, and I would be, uh, I guess we will do the motion to enter executive session. So, uh, I move the board enter into executive session pursuant to MGL thirty A, section twenty-one A, reason number three, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares highway, fire, police, and town hall collective bargaining agreements, and to adjourn upon its completion. Um, moved by.
Second.
Brugos. Okay. Seconded by Mike Goddard, so, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Brugos, aye?
Janelle, aye.
Morally, aye.
God, it aye.
Okay, all right, so thank you, uh, so we will, uh, be leaving this meeting, um, and.